Okay, good to see everybody tonight. I'd like to call the October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular board meeting order at six oh one P M. If everybody can stand, we're gonna have an education and then we'll go with our pledge of allegiance. Father, thank you so much for your love and grace to us. Lord, thank you for these many administrators, staff, our kids. Lord, the good things that you're doing here in this community. And we just pray that you continue to guide us and direct us, that we can serve the kids and the families in this community to the best of our ability, provide a great education along with everything that goes on with it. And we trust you to do that in Christ's name. Amen. Joe is gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to thank our greeters at tonight's meeting. We have Miranda Combs, principal from Jasper Middle School, and Kenyon Teddy, principal at Pickens Junior High. The next item is approval of the agenda. Dr. Thomas, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Quick, I'm Gartrill. Thank you, Joe Whittington. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. All right, the agenda is approved. All right, now is our special time every month. We have some special recognition, so I'm gonna turn that over to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd. We're continuing our Dragon Awards. This is in honor of teachers, support staff, students from all grade levels and disciplines who are making a difference in our school district. As a reminder, there are two Dragon Award winners each month, and you can earn this distinction by being nominated. Anybody can nominate, and these nominations are reviewed by our human resources and communications team who selects recipients. This month, our Dragon Awards will go to a student in grades five through eight, as well as one of our classified staff who's a paraprofessional. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Chris Parker to read the nominations for the Dragon Awards.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Goal Area Three of our strategic plan, communication engagement. One of the ways we do that is through these Dragon Awards each month. So excited to recognize a student today and one of our paraprofessionals. First, we want to recognize Ellie Nolan. Come on up, Ellie. Ellie, Ellie's a student at J M S. You stay up there, Ellie. We're gonna read a little bit about you and we'll go around. This is what some people told us about you, Ellie. Ms. Baker said, when I think of an exemplary student, the first to come to mind is Ellie Nolan. She's dedicated, she's a hard worker in every class. Anytime, you know, they ask for readers, she's the first one to raise her hand, she's always wanting to help. Ms. Combs, the principal, says she's actually absolutely blown away with the maturity and responsibility that this young lady demonstrates. She enjoys every action with her and is happy to have her as one of the sixth graders. She says, congratulations, Ellie, you've earned every bit of this award. So thank you, Ellie, congratulations to you. Ellie shakes the board member's hands. Let's give her one last round of applause. All right, our staff member this month, we're gonna recognize one of our paraprofessionals, Ms. Brenda Hamby. Come on up, Brenda. Ms. Hamby, Ms. Darnell told us she's thrilled that you would get this opportunity and recognition for paraprofessional for thirty years. Brenda's been an incredible asset to our school community, and her commitment to students is nothing short of extraordinary. She's always willing to assist colleagues and students in other grade levels, exemplifying the true spirit of collaboration and generosity. Mr. Hunter told us that Ms. Hamby comes to work every day with a positive attitude, genuine commitment, and helping the students succeed. She consistently demonstrates incredible reliability and dependability. Truly fortunate to have Ms. Hamby as part of our Harmony team, and I have seen this firsthand, so I also agree, Ms. Hamby. Congratulations.
I'm making faces behind you, Brenda.
I know, I know you do.
Thank you, give Ms. Hamby and Dr. Thomas a complete award.
Parker, when are we supposed to get Ms. Hamby to have a speech there?
Yeah, that's later on in the meeting, Joe. Yeah, you guys really can feel free to leave. It's only eight.
Yeah, if anybody, we're about to start our regular reports. If there's anybody who wants to leave now after the recommendations now, it's your time to depart. Joe, you can go. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Thomas. We have our superintendent report, so I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time, we'll call up Dr. Abby May. Dr. May will give us a report on student achievement.
I really had so many good things to say. We just cleared the room there. Okay, so I am gonna give a great report on goal area number one, student achievement and success. I'm super excited to report our graduation rate of ninety-two percent for the class of two thousand and twenty-four. And that, yes. And that beats the state average of eighty-five percent. So that is huge for our school system and, of course, for our seniors. The other thing we talked a little bit about last time, too, was that subpart which is engaging all of our staff in meaningful and relevant professional learning. And so on September thirtieth, our, we call our lit team, the literacy impact team, met. These are leaders around the county that were picked by their principals and academic coaches to come and learn a little bit more about the new E L A standards that will roll out next year. And then they were tasked with going back to their schools and reteaching their own colleagues what they learned. And so this is an example, one of what we did together, and then teachers at Harmony teaching each other. So we are excited about that. We're looking forward this week to conference day. It's a new thing we're trying this year. We know it's in our calendar for this year and for next year, so we're excited to have that feedback for our families. We're excited to have that time carved out, really to have that communication between our teachers and our family. So we're really excited to hear how that goes and then continue that. We have another day scheduled in March, so we're really excited for that. And then I just wanted to make you aware that in first through fifth grade, families did get or will get a notice with their report cards at the beginning of or the start of the school with the adoption of the benchmark advance. There were less grades taken in the first four, four and a half weeks because they were learning new policies, procedures, routines, kind of as we get that structured literacy down with the new alignment with House Bill five thirty-eight and all of our new resources. So our principals and our academic coaches, our teachers shared concerns about the grades not really reflecting what our students could do because they just weren't as many of them. So what we've decided to do is the students will receive an I P or an in-progress grade just for their E L A grade this first nine weeks. So it just really lets the parents know that these are the standards the students have been working on, they're in progress, and that come December for that report card at the semester, they will receive a grade. But we wanted to make sure that the grade that they receive accurately reflected the time they've spent and the work they've done, so.
Yes, a question?
Absolutely.
I understand why they have, you have I P. I think that's a great idea. And you said they would give a grade at the end of the semester. Is there some way that we can communicate with the parents and the students as to how they're doing before they get that final grade in December? So it's not a surprise to them?
Yes, yes, great question. So when we meet in conference week this week, the teachers are gonna communicate directly on the standards that the parents will see that's in that note. So it'll say the standards the students have been working on, and then they should be able to see, starting second, nine weeks in their canvas, which standard students are working on. And we'll be working to communicate with parents and through our student goal setting, how students are doing and working towards that. We don't want anything to be a surprise to them. Yeah? Yep, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Any questions throughout the night? Next, we'll call up our chief financial officer, Amy Smith, to give us an update on our finances.
Amy, this new order is great for you. You're not clearing the room.
I was gonna say, Amy, do not get a complex. I've been doing this a few years, and I was always the one that cleared the room. So I'm kinda happy to pass the torch. And Parker even turned around and said, Amy, you cleared the room. And I went, nope, it was Abby. So don't get a complex. All right, Ms. Martha, I already got my general fund pulled up. So the revenue collected through September two thousand and twenty-four was six point six five percent of our budgeted revenue, and our expenditures were at fourteen point six six percent of the approved budget. Scroll on down. I'm gonna say the same thing I said about consolidation of funds last month. Now we're spending money, we're still working on the federal piece of this, so you will see the expenditures reflected through the end of September, but the revenue process is not ready yet. We're still working, and we've gotten some federal approvals thanks to our federal programs director, who's not here tonight. But those transfers will start on the report you will see next month, and we will catch it up to where we are supposed to be. So that process at the beginning of the year takes a little bit of time, but everybody's well within their approved budgets at the schools. As I always report, we have no debt. Capital outlay, our squash revenue for September was eight hundred, five thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents. We earned interest of six hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-three cents, and our expenditures totaled one million, thirty thousand, seven hundred, thirty-three dollars and fifty-one cents. The month-end squash balance was eight million, six hundred, forty-three thousand, nine hundred, seventy-four dollars and one cent. Our special revenue funds, these are, this is school nutrition program and our federal grants. We have collected eleven point nine three percent of our budgeted revenue and expended nineteen point seven two percent of our budgeted expenditures. Always remind you that those are called pull grants. We spend the money first, and then we are able to ask for a reimbursement of those funds. So you will see the expense being higher than the revenue. Every quarter, Martha, there we go. Every quarter, we are required to report to the board the school activity accounts. So this is the first quarter of our F Y twenty-five school year. It's, this report reflects all the activity in those internal accounts, the ones the schools use to buy things that they have more flexibility than we do. This is not tax money. These are funds that they raise in either a fundraiser or their after-school babysitting program, things like that. But it reflects their beginning balance, any receipts, any deposits they made for the quarter, any dispersionals or checks they wrote, and then what their ending balance was as of September thirtieth. It is a requirement, we report this within forty-five days of the end of the quarter, and it is a requirement for y'all to approve this. So I do like to remind everybody of that each year. Y'all have any questions? That's all, Heather.
Smith, thank you very much. This time, we'll call up our assistant superintendent, Mr. Chris Parker, to give us operations and construction update.
This guy marks about a hundred and forty or fifty at the board meeting I've been to in the months, last twelve, thirteen years. You've got like two rounds of applause in a row. You don't even go to the first one or whatever. Yeah, it's all because of Abby. They feel good back, like, yeah, girl.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. The goal area four of our strategic plan is about organization and operational effectiveness. So one thing we do every month is report on operations and construction to you guys. Today, we're gonna do it slightly different, but first, I do wanna let you know the end of consent agenda, we are asking you to approve a C M, construction manager, for two different projects that we've selected through the R F P process. One for the track at high school and the live animal grow facility, which is in one R F P, just because the same, we're gonna try to do that at the same time with the same contractor. And the second one's the phase two part of the high school. You guys, phase one last year, we did it in the summer. It was a lot of the kitchen and a lot of stuff on the roof. But this would be a lot more what you can see. It's gonna be a big, it's gonna be the rest of the school, ceiling, floor, walls, bathrooms. And it may take up to, it may take more than the twelve months to do. You know, it may take into the next summer. We're approving all that today. So I wanna give a first opportunity to ask any questions about that. I guess we are asking for that approval as part of the consent agenda later. So are there any questions about those two construction managers?
At some point, I don't think we have time to address them now, but I'd love to see how extensive, metaphorically, how extensive that interior remodel's gonna be.
I think, and Mr. Stacy's meeting today, I think Stacy can, we can probably have an opportunity to work session or something to dive into the logistics of what that will entail. And we'll know a lot more about it, because as you know, but for the public, we spent the last few months, it takes a long time to make all the state boxes you have to check. So we've spent months, and by we, I mostly mean Stacy, spent months gathering the necessary information for the R F P, which means, you know, we take bids, we select the bid that was the, and we did both cases, we selected the bid that was the financial best for us. And then we go, you know, we have a committee, we select, we give it to you. All we're asking for you today is to hire this company. Then we're gonna come back to you, Tommy, with the G M P. At that point, we probably really can lay out a little more of exactly what each piece would be. And I think that we can probably do that at a work session in the next month or two.
So I just wanna say, I'm really excited that we're finally voting, and our track's gonna be fixed, so. It's a great thing.
We've done a good job, and to my next, do you have any questions about that before I move to the next thing?
Well, I was just gonna mention, because they're, they're all, we've already seen those ratings scores, but it was quite obvious on the ratings that the company that's being recommended scored significantly higher than the other two.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that committee consisted of, you know, our cabinet group outside of Dr. May, me, me and Ms. Smith, Dr. Shea, and Mr. Williams. So we put who we feel like are our most knowledgeable people in those fields on that and try to take it serious. But, yeah, it was pretty obvious who the veteran was. And we're looking forward to that, too. And it's a long process, and I know people get impatient sometimes, they want something or hear that we're gonna do something, but it's a long process, too. Some of the stuff we have to do either for the D O E, Department of Education, or just the state laws on procurement, you know, it just takes a while, but we're excited, we're moving forward. And we are planning on bringing you a G M P as fast as we possibly can, and that would actually get, you know, dirt moving on those projects. And one of the reasons we're able to do that is because of Stacy Williams, great guy, doing a good job in our, running our projects. And we have a really strong camaraderie among our operations team. Something we knew this year was we meet monthly, the operations team, who all are here tonight for the most part, supporting each other, and Stacy, Mr. Chris Williams, Ms. Jacob Poole, we got Corey Thompson, Miss Beth Thompson, Todd Harris. And we meet monthly and try to support each other, and all of them run departments that are tough, food service, transportation, you know, custodians, facilities, maintenance, and they're running projects. There's a lot of things that people see eyes on, really, really proud of these guys. So we're gonna give them an opportunity, we're gonna do three of them this week, this month, and maybe the rest the next. But I'm gonna give you a little brief update on what they're doing. I want you to hear directly from them, since you normally just hear from me regurgitating their work. So the first person I'll bring up is Mr. Chris Williams. After Mr. Williams, he'll, you know, Mr. Harris will follow him, and then after Mr. Harris, Mr. Poole. And I'm gonna give a brief update on what they're doing, their departments, and that's what I'm gonna cede my time to them today, if that's okay, Dr. Thomas. So I'll bring up Mr. Chris Williams, talk about maintenance.
Dr. Thomas, members of the board, thank you very much for this opportunity. Very glad to give you an update on what we've been doing. I will admit before I start, though, that after the summer that we had, I thought, once school started, the buses started running, my life would be a little easier, and it slowed down. That has not been the case. Once teachers came back on campuses and we were finding trouble, it seemed like never been. But glad to report that our guys are getting after the one-to-one referrals that we're getting, plus handling several larger projects at the same time. And I will mention some of those. We did finish installation of the mini-split H V A C units at North Star. We put a big rooftop unit on Harmony Elementary School. Had to, surprised we had to install a new hot water system around the kitchen at Harmony Elementary School, which, by the way, those are not very cheap. We put installation of a camera and aircom system at Hill City Elementary School, Harmony Elementary School, and now we're working on Jasper Middle School to get the camera and intercom systems put in there. We're definitely putting safety first in those areas, and we're glad to be able to do that. Had to install a new gas line and meter here at the historical building across the parking lot that had become rather ancient and was leaking, so we had to make sure that we had to get that fixed. Installing a gutter system on our new pole barn that we completed this summer at maintenance because we just had a big mud hole without them. So I'm thankful we were able to get a gutter system put on that. We were able to complete gym-wide, or excuse me, school system-wide gym floor refinishing, so every gym in the system has a new shiny coat to finish on it. Plus, we were able to install a complete new floor in the, which we didn't, Stevens Gymnasiums did, but a complete new floor, the old gym at the high school had refinished it. That was due to the flooding issue that we had during the torrential rains where it got wet three or four, maybe five times, not quite sure, I lost count. But we had some four denders, they came in, tore it out, and replaced that. We're in the process now, have contacted, have been talking back and forth with a company in Coming, Georgia, that is going to come and inspect all of our basketball goals in the system, but specifically the high school. We may have to have some motor issues on those, on those goals lifting up and down, may have to do some work there. And going to inspect the bleacher systems in both gyms at the high school and at the junior high to make sure everything's good prior to the end of the month and we get basketball rolling. So we're looking forward to getting that complete. We also had installation of a new video board speaker cover there at high school. If you noticed, that's kind of faded, so we got that replaced by, for Meiko. Probably one of our biggest projects, and we'll be able to see, and hopefully you guys will have you there, we'll get to do a grand opening of our new wrestling facility, affectionately known as the Hard Barn, but the new wrestling facility. Very proud and thankful for the financial commitment that was made in order to do this. This just didn't happen and fall out of the sky. This took a commitment by the board to get this done, as many of these other projects as well. You can't do things for free. But specifically here, and as a former wrestling coach, I can say I greatly appreciate that because when I was here in two thousand, two thousand and one, we were practicing in cafeterias, on top of the stage, in the auditorium, you know, we had no place to go. But now they're gonna have about ten thousand Sparkville home that they can be greatly proud of. I will mention two people specifically, that all our guys did a great job, even had Jacob Poole up on the roof patching holes in the roof that we had there. But David Chapman and Lance Chapman put in extra hours, several, several days, extra work at eight, nine o'clock at night, and coming in on Saturdays and even some Sundays to work, because they had it in their mind, they wanna get part of it done, and they would get it done, and they would put in the extra hours. So really, really thankful for what they did and the help that they gave me. Couple of upcoming things that are big, and I know the high school will be glad to hear this, according to the elevator company, not Chris Williams, but the elevator company, they're gonna start installation of a new elevator at the high school on December twentieth. That is as soon as, you know, we can get the kids out for taking tests and getting them moving, and it should be done by the time they roll back in first day in January. But that system is old, and it's still glitchy to this day. I ain't gotta call it a day, but hopefully we can make it until then and get that new one put in. As, next Tuesday the fifteenth, we're having a new rooftop H V A C unit put in at J M S at the library. That one finally passed away, and we've got to get a new one put in there. And we are also replacing a new unit here on the Reinhardt Building across the street here. Those are called barred units, those that hang on the side of the building, and they've had one we can no longer resuscitate. So we're having to replace that as well. As you can see, most of our issues are H V A C related. And as soon as school starts, everybody's too hot, then as soon as first frost hits, everybody's gonna be freezing, they're gonna wanna turn the heat on, and, you know, they're gonna say, oh, my heat's not working. But our guys are on it, they hit it every morning, seven thirty, eight o'clock out the door, and I don't want it to the end of the day. But again, thank y'all for what y'all do for our kids and for our system, and giving us the ability to put in these new, these new units and purchase these new items and build these new facilities that we're building, because it's greatly appreciated and much needed and overdue.
Chris, in my direct, we do finally have an inventory of all our H V A C systems.
Yes, sir, we do.
Rotation schedule by our bus.
Well, we're working on that rotation schedule, but we do have an inventory, well, I'll take that back, I don't wanna lie there. We did not do the old ones at the high school because we knew the issue of they were all being, gonna be replaced. They did start back there, followed break, and replaced several new rooftop units, that's those that are all pre-staged there at the parking lot on the right before you get to the welcome center. They, and there's some old stuff sitting there now, that's what was ripped off the building. We put some new ones on them. Once we get those going, we will go up and we will have that updated list as well. Yes, I would definitely like to see us not wait fifteen to eighteen years to replace stuff when it dies. I would like for us to get on some sort of reasonable schedule to where we can do that, y'all think it saves us time, effort, energy, money in the long run.
I agree.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Travis, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank superintendent and school board for this opportunity. I always look forward to the opportunity to get excited about transportation, to give some of our information to our board members and the public in general. What I wanna do tonight is start by recapping a few things and a few initiatives that the board has supported and approved, and financed for our department in the past year, and some things that we have implemented during last school year, and then kind of bring you up to date on the success of those, let you know where our investment goes and the rewards we're reaping from our efforts. And then I'd like to give you a few minutes, just take a few minutes, let you know some of the initiatives that we're targeting this year and what we're working on. Last year, we trained and implemented and migrated over to a new routing and planning software. That was exciting. We implemented our Safe Rider program. One of the first concerns we had when I was riding in the district was about behavior on school buses. And with the help of principals and our school administrators, it's been extremely successful. Implemented that last year. It's been great for our bus drivers. It's reduced our number of formal behavior referrals on school buses by close to sixty percent. So it is a, the program and the efforts that were made by both our drivers, our staff, and the schools in general, we've seen a huge improvement on our school buses and the administrative climate for our students. Not to say we don't still have a hot bus every now and then, which you might hear about sometimes, but we work with those and our, and our school administrators are standing hand in hand with us to address others when they come up. We implemented the district, what? Yes, ma'am?
Enter, enter Jack here. Would you just explain to us a little bit about what this program entails?
Yes, ma'am. The Safe Rider program was kind of developed with myself, a gentleman named Grant Ripper, who was in Coff County at the time, Gary Petsch, who was up in Forsyth County in Coons. And we implemented it in our districts. At that point in time, it got kind of popular, but here's the basic concept. It's a three sixty, three hundred and sixty degrees of accountability. And the way it starts is we tier our bus behavior by general, what we'd call category ones, answer yourself, be injured loud, out of the seat, things like that. Then we got category twos, which would come down to fights or something more really, and you've worked in schools, things that are mandatory report. So what we do is we take those when the bus drivers come in, we start, before we turn in a formal referral, we give two parent courtesy calls. And we'll reach out for a parent and say, hey, we'd like some help with student, and this is what we need help with. We tell them why, if it's a safety issue, if it's, you know, whatever it may pertain to. We'll give them two of those before we get to a referral. And what we have seen is, and you know, there's, there's social media myths and all kinds of things that you read all the time, but there's always this perception that, you know, parents don't care, blah, 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 this. They do care. They do care. And that contact and us reaching out for them in a disciplined measure from a principal or an AP, not being the first thing that that parent, the first time that parent's hearing about the behavior, has been extremely beneficial. I think parents have been grateful for the efforts that we've made of reaching out. And sometimes like the behavior, when we talk about category two, there's some immediate, we have to address it quick because it could be a fight or things like that. But for the general misbehavior piece, parents seem to be more than willing to take it on because in our business, a bus suspension is, it almost punishes the parent more than it does the student. So they appreciate a shot at it and we have seen great results out of it. We really have. And our drivers appreciate it because with help from our administrators, they've reduced the number of referrals, they've enhanced how much they've worked with the kids, things they do with them before they, you know, start go to a bus referral, things like that. It, it's been great all around. The, the key response that, and the key to the program, Ms. Finley, is that the drivers do their duty and then we get a quick response from the schools so that it's not delayed or two, three weeks old or something. And we get much better response out of students. It's been good.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you have any stats on before and after?
Yes, ma'am, I do, I, yes, enough. I do not have any previous to last year, but we didn't start the program until September of last year. So I can compare the first of last year to the second half of the year and the first half of this year. So that's the data points that I had to go on. So I just give you an example, in the first two months of school, I think we had received somewhere in the neighborhood of about 230 bus write-ups. Out of those, probably 180 turned into referrals. And then we went to the Safe Rider program. I think in the, in the first month of school this year, we had actually got probably less than 30 formal referrals. So you always get those out of the gate because, but not to say that things didn't happen, but we're taking measures, proactive measures to prevent formal referrals, disciplinary action prior to going to that step and it's reduced it. But yeah, overall, if I just compared the semester to the semester, I would say almost a 6% reduction. I wish I had past years, but the records weren't kept, so.
Those are good numbers.
It's a good number. So after this complete year, we'll have a, we'll have a good litmus to see what the benefits. Yes, ma'am? Yep. So that's been real successful. We implemented with the help of Mr. Shea and his department. I know we talked at length about it last year. We, we implemented an automated process for our student data to come into our transportation department. That's been extremely successful and highly dependable. So we're not entering students manually anymore. And just to give you an update on how this going, our routing processes and our response to parents, students and schools, student comes and registers, student changes address, the student re-enrolls in the school, moves, whatever that may be. Our response time, we get that information live the next morning. Well, as soon as the registration obviously gets through with it. So we can see the students' needs, AMP and both. We can see their new address, we can see the alternate addresses and it prevents them from having to call us and give us all that information. So we see it the next morning, here's your 10 changes that came in through Infinite Campus last night. And we are responding to our stakeholders' needs in a much, much more timely and efficient. So that, that implementation is going well. Again, we purged, and we talked about that, we purged a few thousand students from our rider rolls. That was, that was quite a chore. But, and then shortly after that, we reconfigured some route plans to reduce the number of routes and increase, increase our effective and efficiency in our operations to support our district building missions. So, but at the same time, we kind of asked to delay the implementation of that after Christmas. And then I don't know who, but then shortly after that, somebody decided we're gonna change bell time. So anyway, anyway, so then we went into a bell time change. So we kind of multiplied those initial products and we went to, went to work to accommodate requests in the board to bring our cohorts dismissal times closer to get so that elementary students were in school. Short amount of time, getting out earlier in the day. That was a, that was quite the event. It affected basically any route we had in the district to some degree, some moderately, some a lot. And we had to disseminate that information out to parents, but with the help of my staff and all, it, it, it went smoother than we thought as far as getting the routes designed, implemented on the road. Little, it's always tough with bus drivers when they've had something, you know, the same route maybe for 10 or 12 years and now it's a little different. So we did have, we had our chores set out for us to sell that to them, but our, they, there were a few bumps, but at the end of the day, our drivers stepped up and they are, the implementation and the changes now are going with. So our own time, even with the new bell time change, our own time performance as far as arrival and departure of the schools, we're doing great. We're getting there on time, students aren't late, they're there for breakfast, we're getting our stop times. We're looking good and now everything's kind of settled down. Part of that process, one of the process, I'll throw this in there, that we implemented was we did a student registration system. We simply asked parents to notify us at what level of bus service you need. Morning only, PM only, both or none. And our schools did a great job of capturing that information, uploading it in Infinite Campus, feeding it to us. First time I've done this into a school district, it was really surprising because it's never, it never goes great. This is new for parents, right? So, but it was moderately successful, probably better than I expected. But our elementary schools were probably 98%. Our middle school was higher, junior high and high, those two higher grade levels, it's a little bit of a struggle. They had different classroom schedules and things like that. It's not like they got a homeroom teacher that captures that same day every time. So we worked summers to capture that information, but I think we're about 80% effective process, which is probably the best we can expect on the first time. As we rolled out of school, that process creates some struggles out of the gate and I'll explain why. We, through that process, we had probably three or 400 who in the first day of school had not asked for a bus, now ask for a bus. We probably had 100, maybe 100, 100 quarter decided to change what they needed. I need PM only and then two days from the start of an house, I would like AM and PM. So, and then we had some, unfortunately, we keep alternate addresses in transportation. If somebody lives at 123 Main Street but wants to use transportation from, say, Grand Rapids or something like that. We had those addresses and then in Infinite Campus, they have their primary address. Well, just to give you an idea of, we kind of forced update of that information. Now that we're routing students based on what's in Infinite Campus, folks who hadn't updated their addresses quite a while, you know, hadn't changed my address in a couple of years and then you tell them, okay, your bus stop's here and they go, ooh. That's a long way and then, well, is this your address? No. So, but in the first 40, first 36 hours of school, my staff and I, we made 400 changes, either to an address, to a transportation need or to possibly an enrollment change. So the general MO is to, you would establish a waiting period and start all that maybe the following week, right? But Dr. Thomas, myself and Ms. Parker, we decided that we wanted to try to get service to them as fast as possible, you know, even though they might not have requested or had that address or things like that. So we got it all done in three days. It was noisy, but it just kind of stopped. So now we're better off for it. We have, our student data's a lot better, their address is a lot better. We know what their needs are and we kind of came through that couple of 48 hours primarily. We'll be much better off for it moving forwards. It's, it's kind of a seamless process. The first one's expected to be that way, it's new for parents. But now that we've come through that, it's, it's been really successful. Last year, just a couple of more reminders, we bought eight new bus, school buses last year. Kept our replacement cycle going, Mr. Garnell mentions. And we brought the compliance, the department into compliance with all the DOT, DOE and Department of Natural Resources regulations and all that we had to meet, sort of fuel pumps and all those things. We had some gaps, but we were, we were able to fill all of those. But updated you on some of those, but I can tell you this, our fleet remains the envy of North Georgia. Piggins County, you should be proud of your investment in what we, the vehicles we're putting our drivers in each and everything. We've had surplus all the ones that we have taken off the road, they have been bought and sold or sold before. And recently, the last ones that you, that the board approved and surplus were bought by Kaplan City Schools. And they bought both the buses and some of the equipment we had up, so. So they came to visit or picked them up and I can just tell you, it, folks are wide-eyed sometimes when they look at our fleet and they're comparing what, what they're having to operate with and what we're operating with. My department's appreciative of it, of the initiative and maintaining that replacement process. But again, our own time service is strong. As we move forward this year, we're concentrating on a few more things. Our communication with our staff, we're doing monthly open floor sessions for people to drop by. Tom Mees talked to staff members one day a month where we just drop by, it's your, it's your kind of thing. That's, we've had two sessions, one went extremely well, we had, we had good response to it. It's kind of a cup of coffee morning. The, our recent facility improvements are greatly appreciated. I, I, I'd love for y'all to come by, take a look at that new training room we've got, the parking lot, we got new stripes. We can see where our parking buses, we got new lights, we can see how to back into them. That's, the drivers are greatly appreciative and so have our staff. The routing plans are strong, it did require some adjustment. I think probably bell time change maybe a little bit, but we've seen an increase in ridership of close to 18% from the end of last year edition. So we did, even though we eliminated six routes, we did have to put a few back in just because of pets. We had some buses blowing up in certain areas where, and they are specific areas. If we, if somebody wants that dad, I can let you know, but I think it's because when kids are going closer, parents may huckle one hour, one ride the bus, earlier pickup times, somebody might choose to ride the bus. But we have seen this close to 20% increase from the numbers we had last year. But our improvement plans this year, we're gonna get some older camera systems off the buses. We've got that in our budget, we're gonna turn Sharp out, our organization, our organizational chart in our department, reassess the duties as far as administrative duties, make sure that internally we're being as efficient and effective as we can. Our enhanced website, where, you know, as far as communication, I mentioned communication. One thing Jennifer, for the help she gave in communication, she, she maintained between us. There's tons of information on there, our parents can sign up for bus service, stop bus service, FAQs, Safe Rider program, everything's at their fingertips, answer questions if they have them. It's there for you guys and the board members if they like to know. But we're also turning on our internal safety processes and our safety plans in transportation with some of the recent events in our state that I think we all are familiar with. I've been trained in homeland security with school safety programs. So we have good processes in place, what we gotta work on is our documentation. So that when those things happen, who's ever there and then knows how to respond and knows how to respond quickly. So getting that in a documented form, training people on different scenarios, that's one of our goals this year. And we're, we've got several initiatives to improve our work climate for our drivers. And, and, you know, we want to keep them comfortable, so I'll be bending Ms. Parker's ear on a couple of those. Maybe some of them will end up in front of you. But another big one is recruiting, okay? We have been, and some may know it, but this, in the last couple of weeks, we have been as high as 20% short on drivers. Not because of staffing initially, and we got two or three more drivers and we have thinner routes, but we've had extremely high absentee rates and some of them have been, they're not like surgeries and injuries and not work related, but things like that do, they've taken four and five drivers out at the time. We got a couple out long-term now, but at the end of the day, we struggled the last couple of weeks to the point where we've actually had to take a route or two out just to maintain even with administrators and staff on the road. So recruiting's gonna be one of our hot topics in the upcoming months so that we're trying to get some, we really need about four or five. There's several avenues that we're seeking there, but one I'd like to share with you tonight. We have an agency who has, for a nominal fee, is gonna run this ad for us. Take a look.
Looking for a job with flexibility and great pay? It gets done at schools as higher bus drivers, sorry, $42.25 per ride.
Or higher based on experience. Plus enjoy excellent benefits like health insurance and a retirement plan. You'll have a flexible schedule, summers off and a $500 sign-on bonus. No experience needed, we provide all the training. This is your chance to serve your community, gain financial security and still have time for what matters most. Don't wait, take the wheel and drive your future forward. Apply today.
So 30 second ad, it'll run on Hulu, Prime, Netflix, Facebook, Twitter, streaming and social media networks. It'll be in our county, in targeted demographics in a certain radius of counties around us. For a nominal fee, they put that together for us and they are guaranteeing us up to 37,000 full hits on that piece of media. So in our world, 37,000 may be 1,000 responses, which may be a, a hundred calls, which could be 50 applications, which means 10 make the door. But I think I'm feeling that with confidence if we run that for a month and a half and we get exposure to 37,000 of a targeted demographic in our area, I think we'll pick up four or five drivers. But that's just giving you an update on how we were going from the initiative last year, what we're targeting on this year and I'll answer your questions again.
Thank you, Ms. yours.
Good, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, board members, Ms. Parker. Good evening to all of you. Our motto's in facilities is win. Mayor Webster describes win as to obtain by work or earn. To practice what I preach, I use win tonight in the way I often ask of my team as an acrostic. Each letter representing actions we're using to improve Piggins County schools for students and staff. First, we work, we work hard and we work together. Our lead custodial team meets once a month to share, brainstorm and find solutions to our current challenges. We invest, we've invested in training through Zoom calls, through an in-person safety meeting at the high school, which we had 100% attendance, and our staff's being equipped with some teachers badges for emergency management. We invested in new modern cleaning practices, products and projects such as the turfing of Harmony, the sidewalk behind Hill City, helping to eliminate much of the dirt, mud and mulch that followed us inside. New bathroom cleaning machines, mops, classroom trash cans. We invest in research to find the better quality products through trial runs and samples with feedback to see our paper towels. We concluded a matting review of our campuses Tuesday, including entryways, exits and high traffic areas. We secured funding, purchased and began delivering Kleenex, hand sanitizer and disinfectants for every classroom on Monday. This will remain in effect quarterly throughout the current school year. We continue to invest in our staff and students' wellbeing and outlook of their workplace. We invested in the person. I spend time with each individual, listening, gaining frontline feedback on how we can help. We encourage them to utilize the staff portal and benefits the county has offered, much of which is free. We truly appreciate the investment the county has made. And lastly, we network. I mentioned earlier the monthly custodial leads meeting, but I also want to commend the efforts of Mr. Parker and Dr. Thomas for opening more team engagement via operational monthly meetings, attending an AP meeting and tonight to better understand needs and concerns. This work towards solid communication has been key. Also utilizing networking with other districts within the state as to what is working and what is not, is helping us to make the most informed decision moving forward. We have also recently accomplished streamlined logistics of supplies via online ordering with direct ship to each school location, minimalizing our storage needs and touching the product multiple times. We continue to surround our team with some of the industry's best and we appreciate the gratitude expressed by Southeastern Paper Group and Kimberly Clark's Claudia Mattel and Margaret Naisbent tonight. This opportunity to share what facilities is doing to win is a win for this department. They earned it and thank you.
Over the last, about the last two weeks, I was about, I had opportunities to pick several parents, several teachers and there had to be 15, 18 different people said, schools are so clean, we'd love it. Please pass that on to yours.
I will, and we've actually had some, some outside, through our sporting events, we've had some outside custodial come in from rival counties that stopped our staff because we have staff work a lot of these events now. And they're asking questions, we're being reached out to from other departments wanting to know what is, you know, other districts as to what we're doing. And we're gonna continue to win and that's my promise to you.
Thank you, Jack. And then Mr. Chairman, just a couple of final announcements, just some superintendent comments. I have Dr. May shared our graduation rate data. We also received our class of 2024 SAT data last week and it, we were proud to report that we outperformed the state and the national average. Our data from the class of 2024, our SAT average was 1044. That was higher than both the state average of 1030 and the national average of 995. And I want to add also that we had roughly 46% of last year's seniors take the SAT. That's pretty high, so well done to Piggins High School. This month is October and it's National Presidents Month and we normally have all the But we do appreciate all our principals and it is a challenging job. It's a tough job, but it's a very rewarding job. And we're very grateful for their leadership, the courage and the grace they display in leading their schools. And even though it's just a pity, I'd like to give our principals a round of applause. We do have big news. Next week is Homecoming Week at the high school and it's Homecoming Parade next Thursday. This is a, the renewal of a past tradition. And for the first time in many years, there'll be a Homecoming Parade next Thursday at 6:00 PM. The parade will go through downtown and will end at Lee Newton Park, which will be the site of our Homecoming Festival. We're excited about this. Great news to rekindle the tradition and we're thankful to the city who has worked with us to make this happen. And then also on, February the 5th is Election Day, but we are using that day to have our very first ever Safety Summit because three of our schools serve as a polling site. That day is a virtual day for our kids on Election Day. And so on the morning of the 5th, we will hold, like I said, the first ever Safety Summit for our district. School safety teams from each of our schools will meet with local, local law enforcement here at the board office to have a tabletop activity where we work through a crisis situation. So we're looking forward to that time of collaboration as we continue to emphasize school safety in our district. And our hope is that this event in November becomes a yearly occurrence for our school system. And then just the upcoming dates, we do have student conferences that are, that are going along as we speak, as well as tomorrow. So tomorrow's a virtual day for our kids. November the 5th is a virtual day due to Election Day, as well as the Safety Summit. Our work session is November the 8th and then our regular board meeting for November is November 14th. That's all I have, Chairman Ladd.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. All right, onto our action items. Only a couple tonight. The first one will be approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Action Report as presented?
Yes.
Gibson, I have a second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? 5-0. Okay. Approval of counter offer to the Georgia DOT proposal. Dr. Thomas, you want to make just a couple of comments about this?
Yes, sir, we have to. So we've been in negotiations with the Georgia Department of Transportation regarding two small parcels of land by our property close to the mountain ed facility. One parcel is roughly 0.227 acres, so a little bit less than a fourth of an acre. The other parcel is 0.029 acres, which is a little bit less than 300ths of an acre. Our counter offer when the DOT had made this original offer was double one proposal that they gave us that was accepted. And the second parcel was almost double what the DOT's original offer was. So we're, we're making just about almost double what they, they'd asked us to. And they, our counter was accepted by, by the DOT. So when it's all said and done, our Board of Education will receive approximately $168,000 for these two small parcels of land. And so that's the, the counter offer that we're making to the Georgia DXA.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the counter offer to the Georgia Department of Transportation as presented?
Yes.
Gibson, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Sue Finley, is there any further discussion? All in favor? 5-0. All right. And next is our consent agenda. I'll just briefly share some of the things we'll go through. We're approving our financial reports. As Mr. Parker said, we're approving construction managers for both the Pickens High School, grow out facility, track project, and for the ongoing renovation of the school. Minutes from our September 12th meetings, surplus from some of our kitchens and surplus from our high school. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Some would.
Tommy Gartrill, do I hear a second?
Second.
Gibson, is there any further discussion? All in favor? 5-0. All right. Very good. Dr. Thomas, this is our public participation. Do we have, receiving any requests for public participation at this board meeting?
Yes, sir, we do. We have one person who has followed our board policy and notified us that he would like to speak with us tonight is Mr. Joe Mullins. And Mr. Mullins has requested to speak with us about dedicating our new wrestling facility to a community.
Thank you all for giving the opportunity to be here. I'm representing pretty much everybody who has anything to do with Pickens Wrestling. I've been very blessed to have been around it for almost 20 years now. First, we want to think, sincerely thank everybody for your leadership and hard work on this new facility. It's the first thing we've ever had for ourselves. And so we are very, very grateful. My main purpose though is to ask you to consider owning a new facility in honor of Coach Tom Jenkins. Coach Jenkins was a teacher and coach at Pickens County for over 30 years. He started our program in 1985 and he's been around ever since. When we go to the state tournament, he's there and make, he makes a trip. At home meets, he's there to see us wrestle. He's made a lasting impression on everybody in the program. I think it's best illustrated in the number of wrestlers that have gone on to teach and coach and to go into that profession and give back, including our current head coach, Sam Wigginton. So again, I want to thank you for this, this new facility and I want to thank you for your consideration. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have, do we have any board comments?
Yeah, I want to thank our staff. You know, we've dealt with some difficulties here and there, weather and whatnot, and everybody's been very patient and grateful. And we don't normally comment on public comments, but I was on first wrestling thing, Pickens High School, Tom Jenkins was the finest man I've ever met.
Second.
Tom's, I missed it by a year. He was starting to think about it when I was graduating and he wanted, he would have had me wrestle. So I love Coach Jenkins, so I'm excited about that.
I'd like to say thank to our SROs that keep our staff and students safe every day. And I appreciate the sheriff's office protecting us during our meetings as well. But they all do a great job and I appreciate them.
Okay. With nothing further, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Come on, say it.
Wigginton, Tommy Gartrill, we even have a third. Any further discussion? All in favor? 5-0.